Mr. Horn's not gonna be.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County's Planning Commission. The September the seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. A special welcome to Mrs. Stowe, the wife of one of our members. Ms. Stowe, glad to have you with us. Roll call, please.
Ms. Meeks?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Stowe?
Present.
Mr. Horn? Mr. Waters?
Present.
Ms. Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Harker?
Present.
Mr. Haymore?
Present.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand with me for a moment of silence and the pledge of ladies to the flag? Join me in the pledge of ladies to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seen. Hearing of the citizens, does any citizen here have anything they'd like to bring before the commission that is not on the agenda? The approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Ready for vote?
Go ahead, Ms. Stowe. You the mover, I'm the shaker. All right. Cast your votes. Record the vote?
Let the record show seven yes, one absent. Approval of the minutes, hear motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented in the package.
Second.
Second, motion by Mr. Dudley and second by Mr. Stowe, ready for vote. Let the record show seven yes, no against, and one absent. I do not have a report of any terms, any other member have a report?
No, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article five, section seven of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the planning commission, have been empowered to hear, decide specific applications in support of said ordinance, and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this task, we are charged with promoting health, safety, general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all decisions and recommendations be directed at these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding the zoning case will be limited to three minutes. At seven oh one, case twenty-one zero two-seven is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R dash two-one dash zero-two-seven, Andrew Pope has petitioned to rezone 1.339 acres located on Galveston Road in the Callens Grettnau Election District from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district to use for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Andrew Pope is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Pope, you have anything that you'd like to add that we do not have in the packet? Does any member have any questions for Mr. Pope?
I do not.
If not, seven oh two, case twenty-one zero-two-seven is closed to a public hearing. Ms. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash twenty-one dash oh-two-seven, I make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that this zoning request be changed from R one to A one. It will be in compliance with the comprehension plan in the future.
Motion by Mrs. Meeks.
Second.
Second, who was the second?
Nathan Harker.
Nathan Harker.
Second by Mr. Harker, she was in a way and I couldn't.
Karen's got that way of doing things.
Any discussion? Not, we're ready for vote.
Hi, Ms. Stowe, there you go. Boogity boogity.
Let the record show seven votes, four, one absent. At seven oh four, case R twenty-one zero-two-eight is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R dash two-one dash zero-two-nine, High Country Holdings LLC has petitioned to rezone 2.902 acres located on State Road eight thirty-nine Waller Lane in the Chatham-Blairs election district from A one agricultural district to R one residential suburban subdivision district to combine with an adjacent parcel of land zoned R one. Once the property is rezoned to R one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one-two-two are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, William Emerson, Jr. is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Emerson, you have any comments or anything you'd like to add that we do not have in our packet? Any questions from any of the commissioners? If not, seven oh five, case R twenty-one dash twenty-eight, zero-two-eight is closed to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, was there anyone that signed up to speak in opposition for that case or in favor?
Have you got something, Karen?
Justin Furrow? Come around, Mr. Furrow. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing us here for public hearing. Not necessarily anything against the rezoning, but we do want to make sure that there is complete transparency. We're here today for the rezoning from an A one to an R one, but their utility lines have been shifted upward. It looks like there have already been some unofficial lots that have already been divided or planned through. So we wanted to request a commission, wanted to request for the commission to have someone in maybe community development just ride out to make sure that there is transparency in the development of plans. Because what our concerns are is residents on Macy-Hurner Lane is that maybe, you know, apartment, we don't want apartments to be moved there, or we don't want anything that's going to disrupt the integrity or the value of homes there.
About having any questions from Mr. Furrow? Thank you, Mr. Furrow.
Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to speak?
I got a question for Emily. Is all that, all the homework and due diligence has been done on that parcel? And is there anything that we need to know other than what we've been presented in the package?
So the only thing that staff has been presented is what is in your packet, and that is the plat showing that those three property, well, the two properties zoned R one and a portion of the A one property will be consolidated into one lot. If in the future this property is re-subdivided, a plat would then have to come before my office and we would have to sign off on that, allowing that subdivision.
Yes.
We would review that plat to make sure that it met all applicable zoning regulations and that it did not fall under the subdivision ordinance, and if it did fall under the subdivision ordinance, that all regulations with that were met as well. At that point, the uses listed under section thirty-five dash two-two-two would be allowed, most of which are residential uses, single-family dwellings. As you know, stick-built modular homes would be permitted by right, mobile homes, so any single wides, double wides would have to come before you all and the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit. This zoning classification would not allow apartments, duplexes, anything along those lines, just single-family dwellings. But we have not seen a plat, our office has not seen a plat subdividing this property.
I got you. So that's going to answer one of the questions on apartments, so, you know.
Mr. Furrow, does that answer your question?
I think it does. Our concern is that developers already moved fairly quickly unofficial contracts, so we didn't know if they would have additional plans next term.
Yeah, if there's any additional, I can see them having to come to us.
They'd have to come back to the.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can you?
Come around.
Come on up to the podium, please. Thank you, sir.
I don't mind trying to explain for it so they get a little bit better clarity of what's happening. We're basically taking a lot that's got a lot of road frontage and we're extending it back into a farmland that I own so that we can do three residential lots. The electrical, the city came out and they went ahead and they put the electrical underground. They said whether or not, you know, I subdivided and put it in lots, the big lot into three lots, they went ahead and put the electrical underground. They thought it was best to get it out. It was a bunch of pine trees that were falling on the electrical and they said, hey, we're like, if you get rid of the pine trees and clean this up, we'll go ahead and put the electrical underground. So they actually did put the electrical.
That's good.
And what we're doing is we're subdividing the larger lot, adding from the farm, I got behind it, like an acre, adding it to it so we can have three really big, nice lots.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're asking.
And you said single-family dwellings?
Single-family, yes. It'll be single-family, really nice, you know, fifteen, sixteen hundred square foot, stick-built.
Yeah.
It'll be an enhancement to the neighborhood, it sounds like.
It'll be very nice, yeah, we do first-class stuff. And we actually, there's a house there for you guys know that we're remodeling. We're going to really, we haven't stopped the remodel part on the house that's there. There was an older house there and we gutted the house and it really looks kind of rough now because we stripped it all the way down from the outside inside, and we'll be adding carports, front porches. The house when we get done is going to be first-class. It'll be really nice. You got, they'll appreciate from what it was and what it will be in the future.
And knowing Mr. Emerson, you can take him at his word.
Yeah. Y'all got any other questions? I'd be glad to, the audience or anybody on the board, I'd be happy.
Mr. Chairman, staff has a question. So the plat that we received as part of your rezoning application shows you consolidating into one lot. Do you have future plans to resubmit another plat subdividing this?
If I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure I bought the one, it should be three lots. Pat Crane either dropped it off at the office, did Pat Crane, y'all didn't get it?
No, the plat, we do, but the plat that we have shows one, one lot. Yeah, that's what was submitted with your rezoning application. Mm-hmm. And that, it's the same?
No, it's not the same as that. I did bring in a big map. Hey, Robin, you remember that?
Yeah, we got the little map and the cap.
And it's the same. It's the same as the smaller one that we have. Well, if the rezoning is approved and this is signed, we'll need an additional map showing the subdivision.
Any other questions from?
So, Emily, based upon this difference right here, can we still go ahead and vote on this then?
You can still vote on this because they will need to share the same zoning classification. You can move forward, staff can record this map, since this is what has been rezoned, and then the surveyor will then have to submit an additional plat showing the three separate lots, which we would review internally among staff to make sure that it met all regulations. But if you move forward with this rezoning case, this will be the map that will need to be recorded because this will match the acreage that's being removed from that other lot and added to these.
That's correct.
Any other question?
I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Waters?
Yes, sir. Based upon this clarification that we just received from Emily and the gentleman that had the opposition, I think we've answered that question also. I would ask on case R twenty-one dash zero-two-nine for High Country Holdings to be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to close public hearing first before we do the motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seven thirteen, public hearing on case twenty-one zero-one-ten, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-one one-ten is closed to public hearing.
I just did it, Richard, so you didn't have to say all that mess.
Okay. All right, I have it listed here, case R twenty-one oh twenty-nine for High Country Holdings, that's what I have in my packet. And I would ask that the commission approve the request.
Motion by Mr. Waters, second by Mr. Dudley?
Second, yes, sir.
Second. Any other discussion? No, we're ready for a vote.
All votes in, everybody voted?
Mine is not learning me.
Listen.
Mine's frozen.
Has everybody voted?
No.
No, somebody's not.
It's frozen.
Hers is frozen.
Says showing six.
There we go.
There you go.
Let the record show seven yes, zero no, and one absent, that case number, find it here, which number is it? Twenty-nine, be recommended the Board of Supervisors be changed from A one to R one. At seven fifteen, case S twenty-one zero-one-ten is open for public hearing.
Case S dash two-one dash zero-one-zero, Roger and Deborah Emerson, doing business as The Spot LLC, has petitioned for a special use permit on 5.67 acres located at forty-nine fifty-three Whitmore School Road in the Chatham-Blairs election district to allow for a private club. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative for The Spot LLC is here to represent the petition.
Come forward the representative of the LLC. Ma'am, is anything you'd like to add that's not in our packet?
Uh, no, sir.
You do not?
No.
Can you state your name for the public record?
My name is Christie Watkins with a C.
Christie Watkins, okay.
Any commissioners have any questions to Ms. Watkins? Thank you, ma'am. Seven seventeen, case twenty-one zero-one-zero is closed to public hearing. Is there any discussion of questions by any commissioners?
Was there anyone that signed up to speak?
Anybody?
Anyone signed up?
Someone signed up to speak.
Mr. Meeks, Ms. Meeks? Come around, welcome.
My name is Tammy Kidd Meeks. I live at four-seven-three-three Whitmore School Road in Dry Fork, and our farm is adjacent to the property four-nine-five-three Whitmore School Road. My family and I would like to just give our support to William and Deborah Emerson for the special use permit for operation of a private club. They've never, it's been going on for quite a while and they've been using the road and we just have no problems whatsoever, and it's a, it's a fine folks. So we just have no problem with them, and I have cattle. I'm here to represent my mother, Dorothy Kidd, and she is sole owner of the property. I'm on the deed, Tammy, her daughter, with my sister Rhonda Johnson, her daughter, and they have given me permission to speak on their behalf also, and we just like to give our support. I also have a neighbor, William White, and he wanted to also verbally say that he gives me permission to mention his name in support. He has also livestock like I do, and so anyway, we just wanted to give our support.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. No one else to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't catch the lady's name that spoke first. What was her name?
Ms. Watkins.
Ms. Watkins. Ms. Watkins.
The staff recommends approval with two conditions, and were you made aware of the two conditions for approval? Did she say yes?
No, I don't think she's seen this app somewhere.
The two conditions are any outdoor club events and outdoor music must end by ten PM, Monday through Thursday, and by midnight Friday and Sunday. And it must remain in compliance with the noise ordinance. So those are the only two conditions that the staff recommended with this case, just so that you'll know that, okay?
Ms. Watkins, you have no problem with that? Any other commissioners? If not, seven twenty, case S twenty-one zero-one-ten is closed to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I propose on case S twenty-one zero-ten that we approve this special use permit for the private club called The Spot.
Motion by Mr. Waters?
Is that with or without the?
With, with the conditions, the two conditions that we stated.
Motion by Mr. Waters, second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Turner, nobody's second. We're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, zero none, and one absent. At seven twenty-one, case S twenty-one zero-one-one is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case S dash two-one dash zero-one-one, David Roach has petitioned for a special use permit on 2.5 acres located on State Road eight-two-two Beverly Heights Road in the Bannister election district to allow for the placement of a single-wide mobile home. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Roach is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Roach, you have anything that you'd like to add or comments that we do not have in the packet? Good evening, sir.
I just wanted to let you know that it's already a single-wide trailer across the road from it. And you know, the road, it's modest income houses, it ain't no three, four-hundred thousand dollar houses on the road.
Yes.
That's all I wanted you to know.
Any questions for Mr. Roach? Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Thank you, sir.
Seven twenty-two, case S twenty-one zero-one-one is closed to public hearing. Ms. Henderson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that in the case of S dash twenty-one dash zero-one-one, that the board would make a recommendation to the board of, I apologize, the Board of Zoning Appeals to recommend this for approval as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Meeks. Any discussion, questions? Not, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, zero no, and one absent, that case S twenty-one zero-one-one special use permit be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals. At seven twenty-three, case S twenty-one zero-one-three is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale, I will excuse myself from this as a conflict of interest. Turn it over to Mr. Harker.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, case S dash two-one dash zero-one-three, Mount Herman Volunteer Fire and Rescue being the petitioner, Mrs. Rexdale.
Case S dash two-one dash zero-one-three, Mount Herman Volunteer Fire and Rescue and Parallel Infrastructure has petitioned for a special use permit on 5.67 acres located at forty-two sixty-eight Franklin Turnpike in the Chatham-Blairs election district for the placement of a cell tower. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative with Parallel Infrastructure is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, my name is Hadisha Gordon.
Good evening, could you repeat your name, I'm sorry?
Sure, Hadisha Gordon.
Okay.
I'm an authorized agent of Parallel Infrastructure. We're available here for any questions that you. We're available here for any questions that you may have with regard to the application.
And I'd like to say, just for clarity, our chairman, he stepped down for anybody that had a question about it, because he is part of the, the fire department there at Mount Herman, so that's the reason he pulled himself off, just to let everybody know. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon, did you have anything you needed to add to the petition or explain further?
Uh, nope, nothing to add or further explain unless there's any questions or confusion about anything.
Okay. Any commissioners have a question for Ms. Gordon?
Ms. Gordon, I'm Richard Waters, I talked to you a few times over the phone.
Correct, nice to meet you.
Would you expand on the new tower and the use of it?
Sure, so the new tower is a cellphone tower, cellphone tower, as you know, the host carrier here is AT&amp;T. I also have representatives from AT&amp;T with me if you have any additional questions for them. It's to provide coverage in the Danville area. Again, as mentioned, the property owner here is the Mount Herman Fire Department. We're building a tower, it would be 260 feet tall with equipment compound area which averages about forty to sixty, forty by sixty equipment compound area for additional equipment at grade. Again, the host carrier here is AT&amp;T.
Go ahead.
Will your company provide any type of landscaping around the base, which I understand, I know it's going to be very tall, but the base for?
We, we can provide landscaping, there already is a lot of trees in that back area, so it should be pretty buffed off, because it's kind of be placed kind of right, dropped in those tree areas. So I think it's a nice buffer already, but if some additional plantings or anything of that sort is necessary, we will be agreeable to that.
Any other commissioner have any questions?
Have you had a meeting with all of the surrounding landowners to explain what's to take place?
We have not had any meetings with the landowners in the surrounding areas. It's not something that we typically do have meetings, but we are available for questions, comments, or concerns when we do present at the public hearings. That's usually when we have our first time to kind of engaging with the landowners.
Okay.
Any more questions for Ms. Gordon? Okay, thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you.
Was anybody here wishing to speak in opposition or support of this? Yes, sir, come forward, please, state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ray Erk, I'm chief at Mount Herman Volunteer Fire Rescue. We're hoping that this tower is going to help us with our cell coverage. Our station in a fairly large area has a despot in it, including my house, so I'm looking forward, hoping this will be good. But while it's an inconvenience to me personally, it becomes a bigger issue when it comes to the fire department. We transmit patient information to the hospital, so if you can imagine your spouse bringing you to our station, we get you, we put you in the ambulance, we set up all our stuff, we do our EKGs, we're ready to send you to the hospital, but we can't get it to go through. The hospital needs to get that information so they can be prepared for you when you arrive. So we want, I think it will increase our capabilities a lot, and hopefully it'll make it a lot better for someone down the road in case of an emergency. We've worked with the cell tower people, they have agreed to move the tower now to the farthest location on our lot away from any other neighbors, because we didn't want, if it could, not to, if it was a thunderstorm, cell tower went out, they had to come do some work or something, we didn't want to be doing work in a neighbor's backyard. So we moved it over to the opposite side of our lot, and there's barely basically just trees and us there. So it's not, not going to be bad at all. And y'all know about COVID. COVID has sharply decreased our fundraising ability. We're not going to get rich on this tower, but we are going to get a little bit, so every time we get a little bit, that's less fun than we got requests from Pennsylvania County. So hopefully it'll be a win-win for all of us. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for, for the gentleman?
No, not for me.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Ed Donahue. I represent the owner of the tower located approximately 800 feet away from the proposed location, the fire station. We were opposed for a couple reasons, and I sent two letters in. One was a letter by my client, by SBA, that calls out some of the things that she thought was most important, and I hope you've had a chance to review that. Probably the most significant thing that she tells you is that since 2018, FirstNet has already been deployed on the SBA tower. AT&amp;T has deployed the FirstNet, which is the interagency connectivity, which is so important to the Commonwealth, as well as 5G. So both those facilities are on the SBA tower operational today. And the other thing that she tells you in that letter is that she says she's not been contacted by AT&amp;T about any height increase, about any needs for additional antenna. They've modified the tower over time to accommodate AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and Entelos. Tower works. We ran propagation maps at the SBA tower to see whether the signal was any different at the fire station, and isn't. Quite frankly, it's redundant. The coverage is redundant. What you will have, if you decide to approve it, or if the board decides to approve it, is a lighted tower at that location, whereas the SBA tower is not lit because it's less than 200 feet in height. So I think that's an important consideration. The other document that I mentioned was a letter that we prepared, and we held off until today. We want to see the, the staff report and, and the packet to see what was going for you today, but called down a number of things that we thought were important for you to know. I'm glad to get clarification on the height of the tower, and now we know it's 260 feet. There were discrepancies there in the application, but, you know, probably most important is the fact that, that, that there's a redundancy here. So SBA ran a structural report on its tower to see if height could be achieved, additional height could be achieved at the SBA tower, and that in fact can be done. So if AT&amp;T really does need that additional height, and that does provide a greater footprint, greater coverage for the carriers, then that tower can be increased. It may need a trip back here for an SUP, and that's fine, but the structural does support it, the compound supports it, there's room for us to make, make that height increase. The letter also calls out the comprehensive plan. I think you've got some challenges with your comprehensive plan, and I mentioned lighting, structural, the RF, height increase. That's really all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions, this gentleman?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question, and, and I'm going to ask you, but I'm going to talk to Emily as well. Is there restrictions where another tower cannot come within a certain distance of this tower itself? How, how tall is your tower?
Hundred and ninety feet.
Hundred and ninety?
Hundred and ninety.
And they're going 240. There, is there any restrictions for the other tower not to go up?
Our zoning ordinance does not have any restrictions like that, no.
Okay, okay. I think that's all I got. Thank you, sir.
The letter that I mentioned, if you'll permit, just a moment, the letter that I, that I gave you, the September 7th letter, tells you that the tower was essentially built for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is the anchor on the SBA tower, so that was a height that AT&amp;T needed at the time. But as mentioned, if there's additional height needed, we can do that as well.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Donahue, I'd like to address the letter also. Your point number five within the letter, which you state, the application fails to meet the minimum requirements and is not ready for consideration by the planning commission, and you listed six different bullets there. I called Ms. Ragsdale today, and we went through these, and she has assured me that each of these are met within our packet that we have before us. So your number five, point right here, we have, we have concluded that all of these have been met.
Well, we prepared the letter last week, prior to the packet going out, and with the holiday weekend, we, we scrambled to get it into you today, but I appreciate you checking with Ms. Ragsdale, and appreciate the clarification.
Any other questions for this gentleman?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Gordon?
Not to belabor any points or anything, or to bore you guys, but I do have RF engineers here and representatives from AT&amp;T that could provide some further clarification from you guys if necessary, to kind of, you know, just explain exactly what the coverage is here that we're going for, as well as to discuss with you things like FirstNet and the purpose of FirstNet, as well as 5G and updated technology that will be coming forth. So if you guys would like, I could call them up here to kind of just get some of that on the record as well for your clarification.
Maybe one question they could answer, the existing tower will not currently meet AT&amp;T's need, is that the concern, or?
Not exactly, so the, the, it's not that it doesn't meet AT&amp;T's need, it will not continue to meet AT&amp;T's needs moving forward. So AT&amp;T does have a co-location agreement with SBA, who is his client, as mentioned. SBA has made it difficult for our client to maintain its facilities there with logistical upgrades and things like that, as well as the cost at this point is astronomical. And to, in order to continue to be able to function there, it, it would just kind of just kind of price them out the market, is the way we say it. So at this point, it's more feasible to have a new tower and to go into a new location, which is why we're proposing to build a new tower and allow AT&amp;T to co-locate onto this tower, to avoid having any issues in the future with upgrades and coverage and things like that.
I see. So from your perspective, it's a, it's an economical concern for AT&amp;T moving forward?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Gordon? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another note, if I understood the captain correct, though, there are dead zones there in that area now that transmission of data doesn't occur at times, is that true? Okay. But with the new tower, it will take care of this situation?
Yes, so the idea of the new tower is to continue to be able to improve the coverage and improve the network as it is, and the way to do that is by cutting down some of the costs so that they can continue to upgrade the technology as the years go along, again, adding things like FirstNet and 5G.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Last call, anybody else to speak to this special use permit? Okay. In case S-21-013, floor is open for a motion.
It should be Chatham Blairs.
Mr. Chairman, I will go with the staff's recommendation of approval on case S-21-013 for the Mount Herman Volunteer Fire Rescue cell tower.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters and second by Mr. Stowe?
Yeah.
We're ready for a vote?
Punch it in, Mr. Stowe, you got it. I think you can do it. If you hit yours.
Oh, okay, it just popped up in.
Now we ready.
There we go, there we go.
You got all the votes?
There you go.
All right. Let the record show, six yeses and two no votes, one abstent and one absent. At this time, I'd like to invite our chairman back up.
Thank you, Mr. Hawke. Is the case 2114, has that been withdrawn?
So for case S-21-014, the applicants have submitted a request to withdraw without penalty, so you all will need to vote on whether or not to accept that request.
Motion to accept that request.
Motion by Mr. Hawke.
Second.
Second by Ms. Meeks. Ready for vote? Let the record show, seven yeses, no abstent, one absent. At seven forty, case CA-21-002 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Mr. Chairman, county staff have proposed revisions to Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter 35, Division 11, Industrial District Light M1, PCC Section 35-387 Maximum Height of Buildings, and PCC Chapter 35, Division 12, Industrial District Heavy Industry M2, PCC Section 35-406 Maximum Height of Buildings, to add language to increase the height, the allowed height of buildings from 80 feet to 120 feet for properties located within approved industrial parks. The red line version of those proposed changes are included in your packet, and we do have a representative from Economic Development here to speak for the amendment.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Your name, please?
My name is Katie Saunders, I'm the new Economic Development Project Manager, I'm speaking on behalf of Matthew Rowtonite. I'd just like to support this saying that we are currently working on three projects right now that need this height increase. Along with that, we also have one company that has dictated that this was a requirement in order to move forward. Site consultants are also now requiring this as well, and we, with a strong emphasis on cold storage and economic development, they are also requiring ceiling heights to be hot, to be, for the height to be higher. So again, we also spoke with the fire department, and they had also expressed that they had no concern with this as far as the ladder, the ladder trucks and their safety concerns, so that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any question for Ms. Saunders? I, I'd just like to comment, I'm sorry, Ms. Saunders, I just wanted to comment to the fellow commissioners that I said on the group that was drafting the documents for the fire commission, and we had discussed this at length and was hesitant to recommend until we found out that Blairs was going to get the ladder truck, and with the addition of the ladder truck, it's really a no-brainer in, in my opinion.
It's true.
Any other comments? Not, at seven forty-three, case CA-21-002 is closed to public hearing. Motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we recommend approval of case CA-21-002.
Motion by Mr. Dudley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion? Not, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show, seven yes, zero no, and one absent, that we make this recommendation. I guess it goes to the board of supervisors for final approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Ms. Ragsdale?
Um, we don't have anything for old business, new business, we will have two rezoning cases, one special use permit application, and then an additional code amendment that will come before you next, next month at our October meeting.
Let me, let me comment on one other thing that the gentleman was talking about, increasing the tower that is presently at the car. the tower that is presently at Mount Herman. It cannot be increased, I understand, because of that subdivision. That was one of the stipulations that it would not be. Do you remember that? That was before your time, wasn't it?
That was before my time, and I'd have to, I'd have to pull those case, that case file to verify that.
Do you remember that? You know, it's right near the North Ridge subdivision, in fact, a couple of lots in the North Ridge subdivision butts into that property, and I'm, I'm almost positive because I was involved a little bit, but I don't think that they can increase it an inch, is the way I understand it. So I thought you'd be interested in that. I have nothing else, so. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We survived another one.